Good evening and welcome to the August 11, 2022, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Brodsky. Rothman.
Here.
De Placido.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Weingrad.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Zepone. Carswell.
Here.
Siegelmann.
Here.
Bowe.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Vice President Veighi.
Here.
President Hecker.
Here. Please note that Commissioners Brodsky and Zepone are excused this evening. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of the Philippines, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, just as it is.
Thank you. I have no announcements this evening, so we will move on to public comment on agenda items and open it up to those who are in the room. Yes, please come forward. Yes, name and address for the record, please. I was just letting you take your mask off.
Okay, my name is Adele K-U-B-E-L, and I live at 1848 Ambler Road, Abington, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Okay? I have come today to present a petition signed by over 500 Abington residents. This petition was created over less than 11 days. The petition states, "Abington Township is in decline. The area suffers from crumbled sidewalks and curbs. The area has litter and debris on a regular basis. I want the Abington Board of Commissioners and Township Manager to make maintenance a priority. The focus on land development is destroying Abington." I presented my first petition, signed by over 200 Abington residents, in the fall of 2021. That petition also concerned Abington Blake. The environment in Abington, though, continues to deteriorate. The Abington commercial areas that the first petition addressed have continued to decay further. I have sent emails and left phone messages for Abington Administration for over a year. I have contacted large-scale commercial businesses concerning Blake. No Abington resident should be forced to make petitions for community development to enforce the codes with large-scale commercial properties. I have spoken to many residents. I have these bullet points to make. The significant majority of Abington residents feel that life in Abington with Mr. Manfredi serving as Township Manager has declined. A significant majority of residents feel that traffic congestion has continually worsened over a short period. The majority of residents feel that Wawa stores do not help the neighborhood, and the Wawa stores add to the congestion. The majority of residents do not feel that large-scale apartments vomited into an already crowded township do any good. I also had several residents who are complaining that life in 100 York Road, those apartments that have had troubles in the past, have residents upset because of unhealthy and unsafe conditions in their buildings. Their complaints are the reason, are, they are afraid to state their complaints to management because of fear of retaliation. They feel they will lose their apartment. The majority of residents do not want zoning changes designed for more overcrowded living situations and congestion. These zoning changes invite slum lords, slum lords, to rent small homes to multiple families. The majority of Abington residents are getting info, or not, I'm sorry, getting information from the administration about the further continued community development until the buildings are planned and even under construction.
Ms. Cabell, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments. Well, I'm just letting you know, I'm going to extend your time for a minute.
All right, excuse me. The majority of community residents do not feel the administration and many commissioners act in the best interest of the community. Abington administration leaders do not answer the phones.
Okay.
And the last thing.
Yes, this will be the final comment.
Mr. Hecker, would you please return phone calls and emails that I have sent on a regular basis for over a year? Thank you.
Well, happy to take the petition. Thank you.
Will you return phone calls?
Yes.
When?
I will return your phone call.
All right.
Other?
Do you want my petition?
I said that we would receive it. You can give it to Mr. Manfredi.
I have trouble hearing you. Mr. Manfredi, would you make some phone calls?
Okay. Ms. Cabell, we've given you your time. Thank you for your interest, and thank you for submitting the petition. Are there other residents who wish to speak who are here in the audience before I turn to Zoom? No? Okay. Then we will turn it over to any of those participating via Zoom.
Ms. Lehman, you're unmuted.
Laura Lehman Meadowbrook. And yes, thank you, Adele, for that information. It is absolutely tragic that anybody should have to put a petition together to get responses on trash and litter and the other issues. So, and also, I would like to ask that people are able to address any topic at the beginning of the meeting, please, and also that the page numbers of the documents on the agenda be attached to the number on the agenda, so we don't have to sift through hundreds and hundreds of pages trying to find where the documents are. So, it's such a simple request, and it takes minutes on your end and saves long periods of time for us. Tonight, you have a Parks and Recreation master plan and creation of a committee, et cetera, et cetera. I'm asking you not to vote on that tonight. That has not been presented to the public, and you're bringing it forth at a time that you don't have a working session, which is where this should have gone. And there should actually have been workshops where the public had input while you were creating the scope of work and all of the massive amount of information that you put into that. It's completely devoid of public comment. Not that you don't have a place in there for public comment, but we should have a right to see not only the finances, but also the setup of what you're doing before you approve it. The business of the public is to be done in public, and this was all done privately, I guess, by Mr. Manfredi and whatever team he appointed, and the public was not included. And that is not okay. This is happening increasingly, and it should be reversed. We're back to the Dark Ages in Abington. So, I would like, one of the reasons that we need to see it when it comes to the meeting is we need to alert other residents so that they can have a say. We need to research. We need to ask questions. We need to understand what you're doing before you approve it. So, three minutes is what I have here, and that's without hearing any discussion about what the commissioners might change from what's on the agenda. That's not okay, and we need to change that. So, please, hear Ms. Cabell and answer the phone. Have Mr. Manfredi answer the phone. At all times, the residents in this township need to be respected, and they are getting a tremendous amount of disrespect. The Open Gov vehicle doesn't, tonight is, the amendment is about the financial in the building, but the Open Gov vehicle needs to be approved or improved, and that was another thing that was done without public input, and it does not serve us.
Ms. Lehman, please conclude your comments. You're over time.
Okay. The Open Gov website needs to be able to produce things for the residents in hard copy as well as through your multiple click, click, clicks. Okay? And please film the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lehman. Mr. Manfredi, I'm going to ask you to clarify. My understanding of what we're voting on tonight is an amendment to allow for the creation of an advisory committee for Parks and Recreation.
Yes, President Hecker. Actually, the resolution, there's two things that are happening. This resolution that was publicly discussed, and we'll get you the date before this meeting is out, this was already adopted, was put into place. The actions this evening are to change the sunset date from December of '22 to December of '23 because we haven't begun work yet, but this was acted upon at a public meeting, discussed at a public meeting. In fact, the action that's being taken place tonight would be to ratify members if Commissioner Veighi is so inclined to do so. Also, it's not a massive document. I believe it's two pages.
Yeah.
But...
Thank you, Manager Manfredi. We will now move on to the consent agenda, and for that, I will turn to Commissioner Lori Schreiber.
Thank you, President Hecker. I move to make motion to have the consent agenda items A through C for consideration, and I so move.
Second.
Consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from commissioners? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The consent agenda has passed. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we will move right along to new business. And once again, for this, I will turn to Commissioner Lori Schreiber.
Thank you very much. Item A is BOC 03081122, motion to amend section 1.3 of the Recreation Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee and ratify members, and I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Commissioner Veighi, do you wish to comment?
I do not.
I didn't hear that. Oh, he does not? Okay, thank you. Are there any comments or questions from commissioners? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Item B is BOC 04081122, motion to adopt Resolution Number 22022, authorizing the Township of Abington to apply for a Department of Community and Economic Development Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program grant for land acquisition at 118 and 122 Cricket Avenue for a future park from the Commonwealth Financing Authority, and I so move.
Second.
The matter has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from commissioners? Commissioner Bowman, and then Commissioner Thompson.
What is that, which location now? Homes? Can I take it?
I can take it. Yeah. So, the current property features two, we don't want to call them abandoned, but partially renovated, actually mostly demolished residences, single-family residences that were granted, I believe, a demolition permit some time ago. Demolition started, and the project was halted with the discovery of underground infrastructure on that location. This is a, this, these particular lots are a confluence of a significant, two significant stormwater management lines that take the water out of the community and jettison them into the, I think, the Sandy Run watershed. And there's also a large sanitary sewer line that runs underneath the property. The sanitary sewer line is particularly problematic because if it ever cracks, the sewer gases that get into any of the residences built on top of it would be a life safety risk. So, the goal with this is to remove what's left of the two residences rather than restore them or to reconstruct them and simply convert the land into a park, giving the township easier access to significant infrastructure, alleviating a life safety issue, and ultimately benefiting the local community in North Hills. So, that's what we're asking tonight, and I would like to ask everybody's support in at least moving this forward so we can apply for our grant and see if we're able to obtain this property. Thank you.
Manager Manfredi?
The only thing I'd like to add is, to be clear, that if for some reason we weren't to get the grant and we weren't able to turn this into a pocket park, we believe we would have to find a way to allow that property owner, who I might add has been very patient and very cooperative throughout this whole time. So, that might be, you know, this is the best alternative, but if the only other alternative is to allow the property owner to do what he would like to do, we will have to work that out.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there other comments or questions from commissioners here in the room? Any of those on the webinar have questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, BOC 05081122, motion to approve Amendment 1 to the Open Gov Inc. software agreement with the Township of Abington, and I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from commissioners? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
D is BOC 06081122, motion to approve establishing Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s Memorial Remembrance and Day. Wouldn't it be Remembrance Day without an "an" there? As an official event of Abington Township, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
The matter has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from commissioners? Commissioner Bowman.
Does that mean it's a certain status that it does not have at this time? What is the purpose of this? It already seems to be an event each year, but it just, it makes...
It has traditionally been an event over a number of years that one commissioner got behind. It was suggested by Commissioner Carswell, who's taken on this event and helped grow it, that in order to give it the stature that it deserves, that not only do we mark the remembrance, but also the day. So, that's why it says "and day," so that Martin Luther King Day is recognized by the Township as a special event day, and that this would, this resolution would give the board, president through the board, the ability to determine who best to make sure that that day and that program is put together. And as the resolution outlines, it's very broad. It gives the Board of Commissioners and the president of the Board of Commissioners the ability to make sure that that day goes forward in time and is forever remembered, and it just moves on. That's really the idea, that it's not dependent upon one individual picking up the mantle, that it becomes a community event. And I think it was Commissioner Carswell, so I don't really want to steal your thoughts. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, or if I accurately represented your thoughts.
Thank you. I wasn't actually able to hear the question very clearly. I don't know if Commissioner Bowman's microphone was on, but yeah, the whole idea behind this was, this is an event that we have informally made sure happened year after year by the work of one commissioner in particular, Commissioner Lucre, who obviously tapped several people to assist him in that process, you know, the police and the school district and many others have played a role in it. These last two years, we did it virtually and had a great turnout, and the hope is that the event can grow and continue in its popularity and in its value to the community and by making it officially a process, you know, where we are recognizing the day but empowering volunteers to help steer that, we're ensuring that, you know, if the proverbial bus runs me over, it happens next year. So, the idea is to give it the space to grow.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
And E is BOC 07081122, motion to authorize the waiver of permit fees for the Edgehill Fire Company restroom upgrade in the amount of $4,448, and McKinley Fire Company upgrade of their exterior sign to an LED variable message sign in the amount of $640, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
Matter has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions from commissioners? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
And that concludes unfinished business for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. We will now turn to the business of the Finance Committee, and for that, I will turn to Commissioner Stuart Weingrad.
Thank you, President Hecker. First up, we're going to receive the Treasurer's report, so is Treasurer Blumenthal online?
I am. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start out with the money received from the various departments within the township, and it was deposited into the Republic, into Republic Bank for the month of July 2022 and the year-to-date. So, we brought in a total of $1,856,033 as compared to the last year of $1,775,75 with an increase for the month of July of $130,258 over the prior month, prior year. And year-to-date, deposit has been $66,161,185 as compared to the prior year of $59,291,631 with an increase for the year-to-date, $6,869,554. As for the amounts deposited for real estate taxes and fees transferred to the Finance Department for the month of July, we brought in $116,037 compared to the prior year, July of '21, which was $159,186, with a decrease of $42,049. Year-to-date, we've collected 97%, $32,376,15, with 30% left to be collected of $913,639. Those percentages are in line with prior years, and I don't doubt that we will reach at least the 98% collected by year-end, and that's my report. I'd be happy to entertain. Any questions?
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. Any questions from the board? Seeing no hands and hearing none. Thank you very much for your report, Treasurer Blumenthal.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next up, agenda item number FC01081122, motion to approve the June 2022 expenditures in the amount of $3,713,853.33, and salaries and wages in the amount of $2,115,597.25, and authorizing the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of September 2022, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioners Brodsky. Rothman.
Yes.
De Placido.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weingrad.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Zepone. Carswell.
Yes.
Siegelmann.
Yes.
Bowe.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Vice President Veighi.
Yes.
President Hecker.
Yes.
Motion cast.
Thank you.
The last item is item FC02081122, motion to authorize advertisement ordinance number 2198, updating fees for collection of delinquent municipal refuse and sewer claims on behalf of the Township of Abington, and amending chapter 92, garbage, rubbish, and refuse at section 19, payment of fees collection subsection E, schedule of fees in chapter 132, sewers and sewage at article 8, rules and regulations, section 45, annual rate or rental subsection 3, billings, payment of current bills, delinquent collection procedures, and fees for collection of delinquent accounts, subsection 5, schedule of fees, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Commissioner Thompson.
Can we just get a quick overview of this for public edification?
Certainly. Ms. Herman?
Good evening. I will very nicely pass along to Monica Emery, manager of Financial Services, as she handled the finer details of this item for the Finance Office. Good evening. When a property is delinquent in their taxes, the sewer and refuse fees are turned over at the end of the year to the Finance Office for collection. We make three attempts to work out a payment schedule with the property owner. If we do not make a connection with that property owner, the fees are turned over to Portnoy Law Associates in order to collect those fees. At the end of 2021, the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau released new guidelines that became effective that caused Portnoy Law Associates to change the way that they do their collections, and because of this, they needed to update the fee schedule and their, and their agreement with us.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
And that would conclude the Finance Committee's agenda for this evening. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. We will now open it up for public comment on general matters of township business.
First, the Cricket Avenue thing is an absolute blight in North Hills, and I hope that instantly works out because, I mean, it's an absolute hazard right now for kids or people, kids, teenagers at nighttime and stuff. So, that's good. The second one is, you may have dealt with this before, and I missed it. How come we didn't use green paper for our tax bill? It's really confusing when we just got my recent tax bill. I'm sure other people have noticed that.
I don't know.
Oh, okay. The third, can I get it afterwards? You're going to cut my time off. The third one is, I'm just curious. A year ago, two commissioners decided they would use township property for their reelection campaign, and I talked to the manager about it, and he said, "Okay, we're going to allow other politicians to now use public property." That was in direct contravention of what we always used. Then in May, we had an illegal Democrat campaign rally that was hosted by the township right out here. They used township facilities to do that. It was, it was attended by several commissioners, by the tax collector, school board members, all Democrats, Democrat politicians, and Democrat candidates. And again, I was actually told by a Democrat commissioner that I'm not the only one, Joe Rooney, that was unhappy about this. Now, we have the Attorney General, who, of course, we can't expect to follow sign ordinances or anything, with signs up all around, and I've been told by, in the background, that the sign ordinance is now suspended because a Democrat Attorney General is running for governor. So, is that true for everybody, just the Attorney General? Is it true for commercial businesses, for other people? And it seems to me that this township has an absolute flavor of if the Democratic Party wants to do something, then they can use public facilities, they can use public resources. I filed a complete complaint for theft of public property when one of the commissioners directed his illegal Democrat rally to use public electricity to support the rally. I never heard anything back about that. Now, since the Attorney General, who one would expect would follow local ordinances, is running, then it's just, there's signs all over. So, I guess, I asked the first two questions, and the third one is, is the Abington Township sign ordinance suspended for just the Attorney General or for everybody? Thank you.
Happy to answer that last question, and if you would want to comment, that's fine. Not aware of any suspension of an ordinance. I know, Mr. Rooney, that several years ago, we were advised that the ordinance as was written at the time, that had time parameters around when election signs could be placed in people's lawns. We were told that that actually was unconstitutional, and so that was rewritten several years ago. Yeah. Yes. Yes.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask you a lot of you about the Constitution.
Yeah, no, we rewrote that to be compliant with the Constitution several years ago. You're welcome. It looks like we have a couple of folks who are on Zoom who wish to speak.
Mr. Tobin, you're unmuted.
Mr. Tobin, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Mike Tobin Kirkwood. Again, I'm just going to ask, is there any update to the comprehensive plan? The chapters that weren't completed, the population numbers that were wrong, and as well as the survey for the citizens? The second thing, and then I'll get off the second thing. I was on the Planning Commission call the other day, and there seems to be a big push by everybody. They want walking trails in St. Basil's. And my question would be, if that is for the general public, then how come Albatour Park closes at 5:00 in the winter? Because there's a big walking trail right there. Like, why do I have to have a walking trail right behind my house when around the corner Albatour Park has a gigantic, long walking trail? So if you're going to try and like push these walking trails in the residential areas, it should, the public park should be open also, you know, till 10:00 at night or whatever. Thank you. But let me, please answer my question about the comprehensive plan, the issues with that. Thanks.
Mr. Manfredi, would you care to comment? Or do you want Commissioner Thompson to comment?
Yeah, Mike, I saw your email. Sorry, I couldn't get to it yet today. But Chapter Eight is completed. I have not reviewed the information or received, just received from Mr. Narcoich. But it's my understanding that the remaining chapters are completed and to be on the next Comp Plan Development Team agenda. But until I look at that email and file, so I can give you a call, if not tomorrow, Monday, and let you know for sure.
What?
And as far as the population, I think Commissioner Thompson already addressed that.
How about the survey?
Surveys, what public outreach is going to occur, whether it's a survey or a public outreach meeting, is undetermined. So the next steps in the process, so everyone understands, as I think I mentioned to you, Mike, when we spoke one day, the Comp Plan Development Team will wrap up its work, make its recommendations, it will come to the board. The board will consider that. One of the considerations would be to send it to the Comp Plan Consistency Committee or to do some uptake, some other action as to the next steps in the process. So really, this document that's coming to the Board of Commissioners sometime in August, most likely to be delivered to the board in September, will now become a working product. It is not a finished product. I think that's the important thing to remember. There will be numerous recommendations that will have to be reviewed and vetted over a course of time before it's finally adopted by the township as a comprehensive plan. So there's plenty of time for them to decide whether it's going to be a survey, whether it's going to be one, two, three or four, or, you know, public meetings, whatever that might be, is yet to be determined.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Management Manfredi. We can move on to the next resident who wishes to speak.
Ross A., you're unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, Ross Abel on Upland Avenue. I had a few things I wanted to run through real quick. First off, I wanted to respond to the petition submitted earlier. I know they claim to reflect the majority of Abington residents. I don't necessarily agree with that. Personally, I support the zoning changes. We're in a housing crisis right now, and we need density to support housing choices for our residents or potential residents. I do agree about congestion, of course, but I think we should continue pursuing traffic calming townshipwide, safer streets with more sidewalks, more bike lanes, different modes of transportation for folks to get around, even with apartments, you know, coming in and things like that. On that note, on the sidewalk front, I had expressed interest in adding sidewalks to streets that are without them. So one question I had is, is anyone at the township pursuing any grants through the Safer Streets for All Federal Grant Program from the recent transportation bill? So that's one question I had. And I also just wanted to agree about Albatour. Absolutely, let's open it up. The Planning Commission advocated for that, for the Comp Plan to open up Albatour more freely, because right now it gets shut off from nearby residents through the Abington Arts Center. I think it should just be an open park personally. Thank you.
So President Hecker, before I ask Assistant Manager McLeven to touch on the Safer Streets, I want to tee this up this way. We have a very robust grants analysis and management program. We look at every grant. The Safer Streets, the reason I asked her to step to the podium is there is, it's not as simple as everyone thinks that this grant program comes in and then we simply apply for grants. As you recall, some time ago, grants were becoming unmanageable. So we changed how we manage grants, and we do not go after any grant where we do not have funds available. And we plan for some of those grants that might come along through grant reserves in every department. But with the Safer Streets, that's a larger picture. So if you would, please, Ashley.
Good evening, and thank you for your question. For the Safer Streets grant, which is a federal program, there are two points that I think are important to make, and it is absolutely something we've evaluated and have attended the meetings that the Fed has put on regarding that and have had additional conversations since. But two of the things that have to be considered is, even to apply, you have to have an adopted action plan. The, we do not have an action plan at this point that would meet those standards. And so the first item is that we would have to apply for an action plan, which has a minimum grant requirement of $200,000, I believe. D V R P C, which is the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, is considering applying for their entire region to create a plan for all of their municipalities within their territory, including Abington. And then we could utilize that plan then to seek an implementation grant. We've had some discussions with D V R P C regarding that proposal and what it might mean for Abington. They emphasized in that meeting that, you know, data has to support implementation. And so tying back to Vision Zero and no traffic safety, excuse me, traffic deaths, so looking at those intersections potentially or, you know, areas that would benefit greatly. And so when we look at the whole D V R P C region, there are other municipalities that would be competing for that same pot of funds for the implementation grants. This is open nationally. One of the considerations, so once we get past having an action plan that's adopted, then we need to apply for an implementation grant. One of the barriers of the implementation grant is that I believe the minimum award is $5 million. And so you need a large scale project that requires a 20% match. So there are, you know, definitely financial considerations that need to be taken if we're to apply for that. And like I said, it's at the federal level, so you're competing against other areas. And, you know, subsequently, those are the considerations that we're looking at. So we are actively working with D V R P C, and hopefully what comes out of that plan, if they are funded or, you know, however we choose to proceed, will ultimately decide if we go for an implementation grant, which I believe Mr. Abel's speaking to, that could potentially fund sidewalks. And I will say, Mr. Abel, we are always looking for different grants as it relates to improving accessibility, and we appreciate your feedback.
And it's important to note that this Board of Commissioners and previous commissioners developed the walk park train and have made sidewalks and bikeways and pedestrian pathways a priority, which is one of the things we always try to drive to in funding. And of course, the strategic plan and all the other planning that we are doing, including the plan this evening, will inform and help. All of these decisions will be policy decisions by you at the various stages, including this. And I apologize, President Hecker, for taking that time to answer it that thoroughly. But these questions have been coming up more and more as this, as this particular grant, and it's very involved, which is why I wanted the detail to get out there.
No, thank you. It was a good explanation. Thank you, Ashley.
And if I may.
You may.
The Recreation Parks and Open Space Committee was originally discussed thoroughly in July of 2021 at the Committee of the Whole Meeting. And then again, that original policy was adopted in August of 2021.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson, did you wish to make a comment?
Yeah, thanks, President Hecker. I just wanted to reiterate, for clarification purposes, that at this point in time, we are not rewriting the zoning. We are working on the comprehensive plan. We're going through an exercise that a state mandated once every 10 years by the municipalities' planning code to look at the township holistically and set a vision for us moving forward. That may or may not include an update to the zoning code at some point in the future. That's to be determined based on the outcome of the comprehensive plan. But for right now, we are not rewriting the zoning. We are working on the comprehensive plan.
Thank you for that clarification. We can go to our next resident?
E B., you're unmuted.
Hello?
Yes. Could you tell us your name and address?
Eric.
Yeah, I'm Eric Henning, Morden Road near Holy Redeemer Hospital. And we received notice that the meeting was going to be at 7:30, and I did not hear any discussion when we checked in at 7:30 about the property across the street, as to whether or not the utility transmission lines that are running on that property to Morden Road, are they telephone lines? And will there be any disruption of traffic on a very busy road in installing those utility lines?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your question. We actually haven't gotten to that hearing yet. We're running a little bit behind. And so we will conclude this meeting shortly and then open a conditional use hearing, and those questions can be directly addressed during the hearing.
I see. Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Lehman, you're unmuted.
Laura Lehman, Bryant Lehman, Meadowbrook. Mr. Manfredi, once again, you've told something completely untrue, and the whole purpose of it is to make it look like I don't know what I'm talking about. You said it was only two pages, the proposal that you had. Let me just read you. That is in accordance with and within the framework established by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, et cetera, attached as Exhibit A. That's how you are actually planning to do this. And so Exhibit A is certainly part of what you're doing. And that's 15 pages, okay? And nowhere in your executive summary did you mention the July meeting or the August meeting so that that could be referenced and we could go back and see what you really did discuss, because certainly those 15 pages were not discussed with that scope and so on. You may have touched on it, but there has not been a public vetting of this project. And that is absolutely deceitful for you to tell the public that, okay? It's a chronic problem of the public's need for this.
Stop, if you could stop the clock for one second, and I'll allow you the time. The 15 pages you're referring to are guidelines from the State of Pennsylvania for the creation of what we're looking to create. It's not actually a plan specific for Abington Township. They're state guidelines guiding the activity here in the township.
So let me just read it to you again. You're developing a plan in accordance with and within the framework established by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, et cetera, attached as Exhibit A. You think people shouldn't read Exhibit A and that it's completely irrelevant?
That's not exactly at all what I said. What I was trying to clarify was your intimation that the 15 pages were actually the Abington Township plan. They are not. The two pages that precede that are the plan.
Fifteen pages there that the public had no input on. So if we wanted to say.
Ms. Lehman, stop the clock. This is a state. No, 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 I'm going to let you speak, but I'm going to clarify this. This is, the township has no input on that. They are guidelines issued from the state government that we are required to follow. There is no input.
Well, there's input if we want to do something different, then there's input. If there's no input and we have to do it exactly like that, then that is part of the plan. So is it, I assume the clock is still off, right, while you're interrupting?
No, when you started talking again, it started.
Well, but then you started talking again. I would like to have my comment time and not have you decide how it's used. So please, I mean, this is a chronic problem. Every single meeting, our time is interrupted. So let me get to the other things. And we have literally two matters, the PREC matter and the zoning hearing board, where Steve Klein was the only person who came forward because the others were eliminated in actions behind the scenes that commissioners are not supposed to do. They are not supposed to conduct business behind the scenes, okay? Neither is the PREC matter that you met with a small group of people to be done behind the scenes. Mr. Manfredi, private consulting firm is involved somehow with data. I would like to have that explained since we have instituted website collect data collection.
Ms. Lehman, please wrap up your comments. You are over time.
Yes, well, please allow me my time back that you took.
I've already allowed you 15 more seconds. I'll allow you 15 more, and then we're going to wrap up.
Only for stopping the clock, and I would like to have my time back.
You should wrap up, Ms. Lehman. Thank you.
I'm wrapping up, okay? So I would actually like to know also that, I want to speak to Mr. Abel. We are not in a housing crisis whatsoever.
Okay, Ms. Lehman, thank you for your comments. Your time has expired. I believe that Treasurer Blumenthal has his hand up. I don't know if that was a legacy hand or if he wishes to speak.
No, I do wish to speak. I wanted to address Mr. Rooney's comment about the color of the hat, a lack thereof of the tax bills. It was a supply chain shortage, and they were not able, the printing company was not able to acquire green paper. We knew some people would be upset about it, but if there wasn't anything we could do about it, that's pretty much what I wanted to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blumenthal. And with that, we are adjourned.